To get started again.
That was something that was reviewed last night. For selectmen.
Next up on the agenda is review of the proposed bylaw amendments. And we decided at the last planning board meeting that we would continue discussing lot clearance. And think about bringing something up perhaps at Springtown meeting, although I should note that we did receive a suggestion as to what we might, a direction we might go in with respect to lot clearance from Mario Alana. And Joel, did you get a copy of it? Did somebody send you a copy of what Mario said?
I think I did. In fact, I know I did.
Okay. All right. So we can take a look at that. Mario was looking for comments. And so when we take this up again in the spring, we have this suggestion from Mario, which actually I thought in a lot of ways was sort of interesting. It does attempt to define exactly what's meant by.
What did he say? Tell us what he said.
He said that, well, let's see if I can summarize it. He's saying that you need to get the, that you can't do the site alteration work if you, if another permit is, before you get a required permit and you list the permits, site plan approval, and there should be, there are some cases where it's special permit, issued by the stormwater protection committee, the stormwater bylaw, building permit from the, from the building inspector. And then it, he modifies that general expression to list some exceptions. So you don't, you need to have the permit unless you fall into one of these exceptions. And he's got a list of exceptions.
So what sort of, you're saying you can't disturb vegetation if you're going to need a permit subsequently?
That's right. Unless you fall into an accepted category. And he's got a list of exceptions. What, exception number one, which I think is redundant, is you don't, you're accepted if you don't need a permit to do the work.
Yeah, if you're accepted, yeah.
Exception number two, if you're doing ordinary maintenance on the property. And you'd have to define at some point what that means. If you're doing soil testing, I'm just running down some possibilities. Invasive species, clearing, that's those sorts of things. So, I mean, that's, that's, I think, an interesting perspective. I don't know what you think, Joel, but I thought it was something we might want to think about considering, so.
Well, I like the way he called out specific exceptions that people had specifically mentioned, landscaping improvement for invasive species.
Testing, soil testing, septic systems, those sorts of things. So it, it makes it pretty clear what, you know, who, who would have to get the permit or who would, who would be allowed to do the work without the permit and who not, so.
But that's going, you're deferring that to an extraordinary.
We're deferring that to an extraordinary.
I have a question about that. Can you just tell me, you mentioned that the matter of the time interval had been considered or suggested or something? Because it seems to me that even with those exceptions, let's say, well, somebody does some site clearance, you know, under the guise of just improving the property. My neighbor did a lot of site clearance. Really looks a lot better. It seems to me that there's some virtue in having a time interval which is, which takes the place of making it not a conditional thing. Some real estate agent is saying, cleared a lot, I'll get more money for it, kind of thing.
He's, he kind of tries to address that at the end. He says, if the provision of this section is, and he uses the word intentionally violated, but we need to, who's going to, let's just say is violated by a property owner, then no building permit shall be issued for any newer replacement dwelling up to six months, for up to six months, following the violation.
I would say two years.
Well, it's a time provision.
Takes six months just to sell a place.
And, and then he's talking about, you know, remedies and fines that might be imposed. But it does, it does begin to address that, that particular issue. So, I don't know. It was, it was yes.
I was just, the other part, you know, what he's, what he said before he talked about that is, you know, that he understands the various, that you guys and other various town members, town board members, employees and officials are being approached by buttters to some property owners because they have experienced the effects of clear cutting of their neighboring property. And he totally understands that this type of change to one's environment can be upsetting. However, it is our duty not to overregulate one's use of their property to cause them undue hardships. And it is our duty to preserve important property rights of taxpayers and property owners. Laws should be proposed to protect the health and welfare of our residents and not to impose our will and our values on the minority. We should acknowledge that as things stand today for every upset or butter of the rare clear cut property, there's an equally upset applicant for site plan approval who is pummeled by the planning board and the neighbors in compromising on the development of their family home and property. And I believe the status quo is already perfectly good balance. However, if you disagree, please consider following suggestions to the existing law.
Right. And thank you for that clarification, Diana. The, the only thing we're saying is, and this is what we said before, there is, there is a, what seems to be a proclivity now to completely eradicate all vegetation on, within the boundaries of a site in the three or four example, recent examples that we cited last time. What we're trying to do is say, that's not a good idea from anybody's perspective. Not from the perspective of the, of the current property owners. It's, it's only a good idea if you, if you, if you think that a tamula rasa is the only way to develop appropriately a, a reasonably appealing site. And, and so we're just, we're saying it may not require bylaw, but it requires something to make people stop and think that there may be other ways to, to do site development than completely clear cutting everything standing, you know, on the site. So.
You know, I have to say, it's not just that. It's this whole notion that we've gone through many times of protecting the existing environment. Developer comes, develops, and leaves it behind, takes the money. And I think that Mario's long speech about duties and rights and all that stuff that Diana just read, I want to get the same answer I gave when he gave the little speech last year, saying that neighbors really don't mind. Once it's done, they get used to it and they're happy. And that just, as you know, put me over the edge. Because just when it's done, there's nothing you can do. So what's the point of continuing to rant and rave in the street? It's over with. I mean, it doesn't make you happy. The idea that he thinks it's all okay because people stopped complaining is imagination. So, you know, I mean.
Mario happened to have just walked in, so.
Well, maybe you remember what I said, but keep on saying your thing. I'll keep on saying my thing.
Yeah. We were just going over your suggestion, language change, and Diana read your email, that's the sort of background email. So what we're saying is that it's, we think it's, at least I think, it's an interesting approach. And I think it's, it's something that we should, should continue to talk about. It's not something that is on the agenda for Fall Town meeting. So it's, it's still open for discussion and suggestion. But this, this is, for me, it was, I thought it was pretty, pretty thoughtfully considered. And it's something that, that approach that, that tries to nail down some of the, some of the issues that were sort of floating around that, you know, people had questions about, so. You know, I, I just think we have to continue the discussion, but maybe not tonight. We'll, we'll take it up for sometime in the spring. And we're going to have a fairly full plate in the spring. Because selectmen asked me at the selectus meeting last night to consider the zoning bylaw change at the tavern and on library again. So.
You can't have it wait for Springtown meeting.
So that's something that I'm dawning to get into.
At least you have experience doing it.
I could just hell out one of the whole speeches.
Exactly, there you go.
Get them at town meeting, just present it again. Anyway, so we might have a full plate this spring. The, the other bylaws are the ones that we talked about before, which are, which deal either with scenic roads, is one for scenic roads and two for Dover amendment properties.
For the scenic road one, would the guardrail issue be able to be addressed under that?
I, I wish it could be, but we can only, we're only, we can only deal with stone walls and, and large trees in the right, in the right of way. So guardrails are still, you know.
Couldn't it say that they should be rated for the speed limit?
You could say that, but not with this zoning bylaw change. Because again, it's this, this is an enabling, this is a piece of enabling legislation that the towns adopted on their own. And so you're limited to what you can review. At least with this particular bylaw.
Which one are you talking about?
This is the.
Article 11.
Article 11.
Oh, you see, I'm sorry, okay.
If people don't have copies, their copies are there.
Right.
Is there any review process for what proposed things the DPW wants to do? Everybody's so upset about this, isn't it? Is there any, so they get to do whatever they think is a good idea?
Pretty much.
They don't have any guidelines given by, they don't answer to anybody?
Or the selectmen.
Or the selectmen, that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so that's the scenic roads one. Are there any questions or comments on the scenic roads change?
By the way, that's a general bylaw.
General bylaw, not a zoning bylaw. We're just adding two streets to that. Well, Avenue and South Avenue. Okay. Then the other two deal with Dover amendment properties. And one of them, and number nine, is just a red, it's just a flag for, for applicants that follow the chapter 48, that is Regis College, Meadowbrook School, daycare center, that says, you should be aware that there's an earth movement bylaw that applies to you in another section of the zoning bylaws. That's all this says. So that it, it makes, it makes it clear that this is part of site, limited site plan review for Dover amendment properties. That's, that's the intent of that one. Doesn't affect anybody else. And then the, then article 10 has to do with, again, 48 Dover amendment properties, schools, daycare centers, churches and the like. It says that if you're going to, if, that under limited site plan review, the planning board currently has review capability for onsite vehicular and pedestrian circulation. But determination of parking acceptability is up to the building inspector. And what that has set up is situations where the building inspector might say that the parking is acceptable, but the, when the planning board does the analysis of the vehicular and pedestrian circulation, the parking layout conflicts with, with the, the safe operation of those, of those components. So that now you're talking about a parking layout that's approved by one review authority, conflicting with the operation of the vehicular and pedestrian flow under another. So what this does is it simply says that only for Dover amendment properties, these two come under the review authority of one entity, namely the planning board. So the planning board looks at parking, vehicular and pedestrian circulation all at once. And that's, that's the whole point of the bylaw. Just to knit it together so you don't have two independent reviews working back and forth.
I suggested that we just add that little phrase that says non-residential breaks my heart, but. Because it has the, it has the phrase in it. It says, and any other uses not specifically mentioned elsewhere in this bylaw, boy, I'm sure includes residential. But you said that wasn't the intent, so rather than look for trouble.
What she's saying is.
I'm sorry, I'm missing.
If new paragraph L. And L would read all other non-residential or, all other non-residential uses not specifically mentioned above.
Oh, sure.
Because right now the bylaw doesn't address residential.
Oh, okay. That's fine.
See, this is what I busted about last week. I would love to cover residential, but that's not what you intend.
Right.
And I wish I knew how to do it other than the clerk. The clerk, I think it's the clerk's authority that says you've got to have two lanes, two 10-foot wide lanes on every street. You're foolish enough to need to fire the department, for example.
Yeah. That's, that's almost universal. I think of a few streets that don't meet that one.
Yes, so anyway, it says, it says in the, in the leading section of that, you have it, boy.
Yep, got it. So all other non-residential.
Not specifically mentioned, so since, since you ended up iterating A through K.
Yeah.
All these different things. And then L, all of the non-residential uses. Sadly, stopping from using this to make sure this.
Does, does that seem okay to you, Joel?
Yes, yes. So that would be by way of an amendment.
No, this is, the, the selectman voted to accept these amendments conditional on any changes that we might make tonight. So I don't have to make an amendment to tell me.
So what I would do is tonight I'll provide Donna with the changes.
Yes, and I just don't, I had it in front of me last time. I don't have it in front of me this time out, so it's. My sense last time was it was worded such that if you had, for example, site plan approval on a business use, you would have jurisdiction over parking. Okay. And that's what I'm hearing you saying tonight.
No. Only Dover amendment.
Just limited site plan approval.
48.
You want to Dover, all right.
Are all those A through K Dover exceptions, right?
No.
A through K, that's sort of.
No, they're all kinds of commercial.
Only K.
Oh, I see, okay. So this, I see, all right. So this entire discussion only refers to K.
And only refers to K.
Okay, sorry.
Doesn't refer to any of the others.
So then, putting non-residential in L, not to make things more complicated, I think L is referring to K, not A through K.
Right.
Unless that's what you intended.
It really is. I mean, what, we create another paragraph, in other words, L.
It's the first A through K that I suggest, that you say.
But all of the non-residential is not specifically mentioned above. Does that mean K or does that mean A through K?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Well, then, instead of saying above, she's saying K. I said the root, so I'm not going to say K instead of above. If you want it to be specific.
That's what I said, so you say A through K or?
I misunderstood what you meant, right?
What?
I misunderstood what you meant, now I see what you're saying.
Yeah, because above, you know, though, it means, it means strictly.
You're saying, is it A through K or is it K?
Yeah.
Schools.
I think you mean K.
Yes.
Joel? Yeah? I don't know if you were listening.
I was distracted, I'm sorry. We were talking business.
We should talk to each other. The question here has to do with the new paragraph L.
Yes.
To what does it, to, in your mind, to what does it refer? Is it, is it reference, it, it, does it reference A through J? Or does it reference K?
Oh, no, A through K.
A through K.
A through K.
Yes.
A through K.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, so the, the scheme, if you will, has, has, it's not intended that the scheme change, and I don't believe it does change by doing this. This just breaks out the former K into two components.
Okay.
And so I don't see that the section's changed.
Okay.
So it refers to everything above.
So you, are you saying that it refers to A through K or just K?
But we don't want it to refer to everything above, do we?
It did, it always did.
It always did.
And it's intended to, continue to.
So we should say A through K then?
It doesn't need to. I mean, I, I.
You don't think?
We're, we're trying to solve problems here that don't exist. It's not a problem, and it says.
So you're saying that above is.
Means A through L.
Without any question, everybody would assume it that way.
Yes.
But, but we're just excluding K from the, this says the inspector of buildings, you know, reviews parking adequacy, right?
Well, okay.
Not specifically mentioned.
I think the issue that's being raised here is simply, we're just talking about the first five or six words.
Yeah.
So you've got, today you have A through K, now you're allowed to be through L. And K says today, and L will say.
Oh, I understand.
All other uses not specifically mentioned above.
Betsy's right. Not specifically mentioned above is the, are the key words.
Right.
And so we do, we, we don't really need non-residential uses. Is that just implied? Or should we, is it okay to, does it matter whether we put it in there or not?
See, I, I think Susan's comment is that in A through K, residential uses aren't included. So if, if I own a house in town, there's nothing that tells me how many parking spaces I have to.
Right.
So I think her comment about adding the word non-residential, all other non-residential uses, she wants to make sure that residential is not included because that's going to raise red flags at town meeting. I think that's what your term is.
I, I, I don't know, but from what I understand, from what I've heard, it's not been an issue in low these many years you've had the bylaw. Is that right?
That's been an issue, no.
Right. So, I, I mean, it ain't broke, is my sense.
Right.
I mean, you can put it in, but people, by putting it in, people are going to say, oh, does this include residential? Or in the language suggesting otherwise. I mean, I think, so, I mean, you can put it in to make clear whatever that has been clear to everybody here before.
Just at default, well.
Well, what, what, what?
I mean, you know.
Have there been problems with, I mean?
No, but I mean, I'm thinking of when Jonathan came before the board at one point, when somebody was trying to demolish part of the house. And the zoning bylaw at the time didn't say substantial. And so they walked away and did what they wanted. So there was a problem, but it has to come up sometime. It can be no problem for years and years and years. And then it comes up. So, I mean, the fact that.
But what do you think might be a problem?
Well, if, if I read this myself, I'd say, wow, now this is telling me that I can, I can demand that parking be included in every single residential project. Overtly, not just site plan review governed projects, but every single residential project because it's not excluded.
I think I agree with her. It can't hurt anything.
I, I, I'm just.
If someone takes it literally.
I don't, I don't have a problem with it either. I, I mean, but I'm just trying, you know, as Joel said, it's not, it's not, we're not really changing the language in paragraph L from what was there before, except for the last sentence, which I have some questions about.
Well, there's a reason why we added L, but, you know, I'm just trying to be nice to you. Because.
Don't try.
Doesn't work?
You haven't tried in the past, you might as well.
I, I want to, I want to be recorded as objecting to that. I watch out for it all the time. No, this is what you want to do. It breaks my heart because I would like to have some lever to make people get their damn vehicles walk the road, blocking the road for the fire engines.
Yeah.
But, you know, I'm not going to get that by subterfuge.
All right. Look, let's put it in.
Yeah, I see.
So non-residential is coming in.
Yeah, it's going in.
After the word all other.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, I'm sorry, Susan, I didn't mean to imply that you could mean to me. I just.
Oh, okay.
Especially like, no, you said.
I live to please you. Oh, my God.
I am not quoting any of this.
It's on TV, it's on TV. I think you're just amusing me.
All right. None of the last sentence of paragraph L.
The veins of our lives.
I thought we'd take the transportation consultant out of it. Did, did we not discuss taking, just say, the building, the inspector of buildings may, may consider accepted industry standards in making such a determination? Or did we, or did we decide to leave transportation consultants in, in the language?
That's what we decided, though. I think it's a great idea because it's like.
Well, leave it in? We decided to leave it in?
We did.
You know, you've also got it in paragraph K.
It's also in K.
It's in K, right?
And I think we did have.
But if you don't prohibit the, the person in charge from doing that.
I just don't, I just have a problem with it. Because you're just, you're, you're basically saying, if somebody's, if you don't hire the transportation consultant, somebody could say, well, why didn't you hire the transportation consultant? And you're, you know, you're, it's a dereliction of your responsibility.
Brilliant.
I, we just don't, we don't require people to hire engineers necessarily for every, everything that comes up. I don't know why we would specifically, in this instance, you know, suggest a particular consultant. But I don't know, does it, do other people feel that way or?
Yeah, I agree with you because, I mean, we have always had it within our purview that we can have a consultant for the traffic and platter parking. We've always done that. But to add it in to the inspector of buildings now would get, I could see where we might consult two different consulting groups. And then we have the infighting. I, I don't see any reason to have it for the building inspector.
So you're talking about both K and L, right?
Yeah. Yeah, because it's in both paragraphs. It's the last sentence of both paragraphs.
I don't know.
I mean, we double the cost.
Other people have an opinion one way or the other.
Yeah, well, it's not the point. I thought we didn't say the last time that it was sort of per the board's discretion that we would decide whether or not.
But it's always been at the planning board's discretion. We've always been able to access.
Well, I think Al's point last time was, it doesn't have to be in the bylaw itself, it's.
No, it doesn't have to be in the bylaw. That's why the sentence should be gone in both.
Just to remind you, the.
Just our process and procedure.
Sorry. I'm sorry. The earlier draft actually had the word shallow instead of bay, so that prompts some of the discussion.
Softened it, but having gone through this, around this particular block about 100,000 times, it may turns into shallow in a surprisingly quick space of time. You know, if, if, if it's something you didn't do and it's, and the words are in there in the bylaw, you know, may become shallow if you've got a beef with how things were done.
Well, not having it in there doesn't prevent us from doing it.
It doesn't prevent us from.
It does, it does, yeah.
You should just take it out.
Yeah. And the building inspector has never used consultants in the past. I mean, if they need them, just like with the Warren Ave project, they come through us.
How about consider accepted industry standards? Is that, how do you feel about that? If you take the consultant out and just leave considered accepted industry standards in, is that?
We do all, it goes without saying.
Yeah, it does go without saying. It seems that's, I would assume that most of his.
So it would read, in either case. So it would read, in either case, the.
The whole thing goes out, Betsy.
That's the entire sentence is gone, that's what it says.
Well, I look at it and it shits.
Yeah, I'd just take the whole last sentence out.
Yeah. In both K and L.
Right.
Sound good?
Joel?
Yes, I mean, it's up to you, really. I think Betsy made the point last time that by putting it in there, there's some reference to standards, but, because otherwise there's no standard for it, but when, you can refer to the standards when there seems to be a need for a standard.
I mean, this may be a dumb assumption, but I assume our building inspector adheres to common accepted building standards for the state of Massachusetts.
Well, these wouldn't be building code standards, these would be typically like Institute of Traffic Engineers or something like that.
Right, but I would think that he's already, I would imagine, aren't there standards in the building codes, of man parking and stuff like that? No, so how does the building inspector come to this, his decisions? If there were no guidelines for him to refer back to? Anybody know?
I think they're citing industry standards or traffic turnover, that type of thing, depending on what the use is.
Right, but hasn't our building inspector always done that?
I don't know.
No, no, it's whatever looks right.
So whatever looks right.
Yeah, I mean, I can see, I can see flagging accepted standards, except that if it's optional, it could still default back to whatever looks right, so...
So you want it to say, the inspector of buildings will consider accepted industry standards in making such a determination? I don't know, but I mean, they're saying that if you want to throw the whole baby out here, maybe just keep in that the building inspector would use accepted industry standards, which I was going on the assumption that that was what he was using already, but everybody says, no, that's not the case.
Yeah.
Well, let's clarify this, I mean, all of the other A, you know, with parking requirements, right? It does have specific things about how many, you know...
Yeah.
So there are standards in our bylaw?
Some, but that last one is obviously very vague, it's to everything else, and then it becomes whatever looks right.
What if you take the whole sentence out of K, but leave the industry standards part in L?
And get rid of "may" with "consult with transportation consultants?"
Yeah, "may consider accepted industry standards in making such determination," and that way...
And "may consider," okay.
If there are specific requirements in the paragraphs A through J, then with catch-all, you know, he at least releases a flag that says the building inspector has to...
And you're saying "may," which will be rapidly interpreted as should, would, and must have.
Or maybe.
Or don't have to. Or don't have to at all.
Now, what if after "way," you just say, "considering accepted industry standards," leaving aside whether it's "may," "shall," "would," or anything?
Yeah.
Yeah, the trouble with that is that then makes it mandatory.
Doesn't.
Well, considering, doesn't mean you have to do it, it means you have to consider it. It means you have to have some sort of explanation if you don't use it, and that's reasonable.
No, actually, that's not, I don't think that's right, Susan. If it's, a public or private way, comma, "considering accepted industry standards," means that that's how he has to do it. He has to do it by considering accepted industry standards. So...
Yeah, just for you to consider, so if you do it that way, then there are standards in the bylaw for A through K. For K, there's no reference to standards, not to Dover uses, and then for L, there would be "may consider," the building inspector "may consider industry standards," so...
Yeah, you're missing a parallel.
Exactly, yeah.
So you'll leave, either leave it in both or take it out of both.
Yeah.
Take it out.
And my simple problem I had with it was that you're letting the industry tell the town what you do.
Yeah, that's true, yeah, that's true.
Well, if I may, it's not that you're having the industry tell you, the industry, mainly the Institute of Traffic Engineers over the years, has developed standards based on typical traffic generation for typical uses. So it's just, it's a guideline, and it's not that you have to follow it, but, you know, it tells you that typically a theater with 200 seats will generate X number of cars. And so you can consider, now you say, well, here in Weston, because of this or that factor, it's going to be higher, it's going to be lower. But it's just experience-generated data.
I think...
I mean, the prior stuff is based on industry standards, much of it, so you could make that argument for A through J.
Except that that is spelled out.
Right, so the interruption is spelling it out and not leaving it up to...
It's, if I were, if I were the building inspector, and I, and somebody looked at a site plan and it didn't have specific requirements enumerated in the zoning bylaw, the first thing I would do is check industry standards to see how close what was being proposed would be to something that was similar. So it's almost, it's almost kind of insulting, you know, you're telling the building inspector to do something that probably a building inspector would be likely to do anyway. I don't know, I'm just saying. Certainly, the planning board does, all the time. So it's almost like saying, we think this is necessary to put this in here because we're afraid you're not going to do it.
So the easiest thing to do would be drop both, full paragraphs of K and L, am I right? Just don't put down that rabbit hole right now?
Yeah, that would be, I think that's how I come out on it. Just leave it up to the building inspector and, you know, I don't know, what do you guys think?
I think it should be left out in both paragraphs.
So, in K, the language that's going to be dropped is, "In either case of the inspector of buildings or the planning board making such determination, both may consult with transportation consultants and consider accepted industry standards in making such determination."
Yeah.
And the one below it is... Yeah, okay.
Any other comment on this particular amendment? Okay, then I think what we need is a motion to accept the language of the amendments.
So who's...
Anyone second?
With the revisions discussed.
The change is noted.
Second.
Want a favor?
So one question I might as well ask you, if I could. Most of these that the building inspector is going to make determination on, you folks have site plan approval anyway, business uses, or what most of them will be, and these apply to, so, and you're gonna, you're gonna come up with your own parking requirements. Is there any reason that, to include on those, why not, you have site plan approval, you have to be the only ones to, otherwise you have potential conflict?
We do, but it's a little easier to work out if it's not limited site plan review.
Okay.
That's the difference. Okay, that's it. Our next hearing is scheduled for 10:50. 9:55, we can go right into it.
Did you already, did you already take final action on the scenic roads? I'm sorry, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, it was, oh, I thought...
That was finished two weeks ago, I was there, it's alright. I just don't, I mean, I'm the one who said move it up in the schedule because I thought it was 9:50.
Was the first one we talked about, was the first one we talked about this evening?
I just heard about guardrails, 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 I didn't get that we did, that's fine, that's okay.
Did you have something you wanted to say?
No, I just thought that it was, hopefully it's not controversial, I'll show you what I know. So that's fine, that's done, that's really good.
That's done, yep.
I was hoping you could tell us again, unless you care for the time, explain the general bylaw and zoning bylaw, do you can change the status, if you could explain it one more time?
Sure.
But you don't have to give me a comment.
Oh, it's fine. It gives me a chance to rehearse it again.
Okay, good.
There are two bylaws, one is a general bylaw that deals with some tree, large trees and stone walls in the right-of-way of specific roads that are listed in the bylaw. Trees and stone walls in the right-of-way, that's one bylaw. There's a separate zoning bylaw that deals with new or replacement construction on properties on scenic roads that are listed in the zoning bylaw.
And you already explained the right-of-way aspect when somebody sort of questioned that. I guess what I wondered is why are, and just answer it, why are there two bylaws having to do with scenic roads? And the answer is, because one has to do with trees and, trees and stone walls, and the other has to do with construction.
Exactly, that's it, that's it, exactly. Trees and stone walls in the right-of-way.
In the right-of-way, right, exactly, okay. Very good, I'm happy.
Good, okay, and we're ready to, thank you, Joel.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Joel.
So I think we're ready to start the hearing on 86 Loring Road.
What about all of the rest of these laws?
They're not us.
Oh, Preston Street and Warplane?
No, it's not us.
And the town meeting at 7:00, who thought that was running?
The advisory committee.
The advisory committee.
Oh, from the detailed statistical floor analysis of what demographic shows up.
Take it up with us, Susan.
Yes, sir. Take my cudgel up, because that's two sentences. They sit there, they don't have any idea about statistics, and they're like, who do you have this demographic, that demographic that shows up? This is the solution, is that a problem?
It just means it'll go from 7:00 till midnight, rather than 7:30 to midnight.
That's exactly what's gonna happen.
Say it again?
Instead of going from 7:30 to midnight, it'll go from 7:00.
7:00 to midnight, yeah.
Well, you guys do it, so it's...
Exactly, we sure do do it.
Sorry, this is just, the rest is just practice.
But we like this.
You could have more meetings, Susan.
What?
You could have more meetings.
She says what it is.
I do, I mean, the thing with being a planning board is you have the joy of being appointed to multiple other committees, which meet at night.
What's your point?
Right?
Don't look at me.
I'm looking at the state. We spend as much time at these meetings as I do. Yeah, moving right along, starting.